At exactly six o'clock, and I call this regularly scheduled Dunwoody City Council meeting to order unless there's an objection. Seeing no objection, the meeting is called to order. Councilman Lambert, can you lead us in the invocation and the pledge, please?
Yes. At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nate. Just in case counsel doesn't know Sharon is on the telephone as opposed to on your Zoom screen. And I'd like to start public comment. It's a hybrid meeting, so we'll have three minutes. Each speaker will have three minutes. If you're online, you can raise your hand, use your Zoom hand as I raise my real hand. Use your Zoom hand to let us know you're interested in speaking, and we will alternate. So Randy Lucius, if you'd like to come to the microphone, and you'll have three minutes, and please make sure the green light is on, and speak into the microphone as close as you can.
Thank you. So when I heard about-
Could you just say your name for the record, please?
Sure. Randy Lucius.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So I live here in Dunwoody, and I've been in Dunwoody for over 20 years. And when I heard about the parks that were being built and the softball fields that were being built, rather, for the park at the former location for Austin Elementary, I was very excited because being a former softball coach for girls softball for many years and a parent for even longer, I was glad to finally see that the city was considering doing something for girls athletics. We have so much for boys, but we don't have anything for the girls. We have to travel to Brookhaven to Murphy Camler to give our girls any kind of opportunity. And we have so, we have, we just have so much here for, for boys, we really need more for our girls. So I know that there's some concern about the lights and traffic coming in out of the location, and some of the neighbors nearby are concerned about it, but I really think we need to be thinking a little bit more broadly about the entire Dunwoody community. And that's what our parks are for, is for the entire Dunwoody community, not just the immediate neighborhoods right by the park. And we just need to be doing more to support girls athletics. It does so much for, to shape the girls' character. And right now, our only options are traveling down to Brookhaven or other parks, and we just don't have enough. We don't have any facilities for our travel teams right now. We had a facility for the Flames team that was at the old elementary school there near Shaleford and shambly Dunwoody, but that was taken away. So right now, we don't have anything for them. And, and it's incredibly difficult to schedule fields at Murphy Camler because there's just so many teams, and it's just very limited space because they've only got four fields. So we really do need something else for girls, and I really hope that it will go through. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Jay, I don't know who's controlling. Is it Ginger?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Okay. If you want to bring on Andrea Hirsch, I see her hand up.
Yes. You should be able to unmute and speak at this time.
Thank you. Hi, it's actually Joe Hirsch, just the wrong Zoom account, but hello. I am speaking regarding the item on the agenda for this evening on the Vermac Road, Vanderland Road, Willmac Road area for the school and parking. As some of y'all might recall, when the parking situation along Vermac Road, when the city striped it about 10 years ago, one of the key issues that the city mentioned was parallel parking is not friendly towards bikers. If a car door on the driver were to open a door, it puts a bicyclist in jeopardy, potentially. So with the plan that's listed now, where there would be a wider sidewalk where bicyclists could go on the passenger side in theory, that could also put bicyclists in jeopardy on the passenger side as well, and nothing's really accomplished as far as making anything safer for cyclists. So with that, a couple of points. I noted, I note that in the conceptual drawings that it shows that the sign for the high school would have to be moved back, the main welcome sign, but it does not indicate the city did grant a variance to the high school in DeKalb County for the trailer steps. The steps have been in the city's right-of-way for the last five years, and they were finally granted a variance last year. So that should hopefully also be considered. So what I would suggest, and one of the things that y'all said y'all considered but did not have an interest in pursuing, is the diagonal parking. Diagonal parking would gain 12 spaces, albeit not very many, and it's a significant amount of money, but if you had 12 spaces, that's better than none. It's also, if you've ever driven by the school in the mornings, you know that the spaces, the parallel spaces as they are now and as they're proposed, aren't very large. They're less than 18 feet apart, a space. A pickup truck is 17 and a half feet, so there's six inches. With parallel parking, there's only six inches beyond a pickup truck, so the cars can't even go in and out. It's, they have to line up in order in the morning, and if someone leaves during the day, they're kind of stuck. So for the safety of the bicyclist, for adding more spaces and more convenience so people can actually park in there, actually do something for the students, you know? We always say there's nothing-
20 seconds remaining.
There's nothing we can do for the students, the schools have nothing to do with Dunwoody, the city, but here's a chance to actually do something to improve safety for cyclists and for school students. I, I hope that you'll revisit and consider actually making it, doing actually something for the students and the cyclists in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan Dwasken?
Hello again, everybody.
Is it, are you, is the microphone on? And are you, okay, thank you.
Joanie Dwasken, I live at 571 Ben Creek Road. Good to see you again. I hoped that when I spoke during the public comment period at your last meeting, that you would take my comments into consideration and just give me the courtesy of some answer. You've made it clear, we can't communicate with you here. We can't communicate by email, by phone calls, or some meeting outside of this setting. Does this mean that the residents have elected you to your positions and that have been harmed by the city's failed attempts to restore the Mill Glen Creek that feeds into the pond that's part of your stormwater management system? I've only one option, and that option is that to get to talk to, to get you to talk to us about your, the extent of your responsibility. We have to file suit to protect our private property rights. If that's the case, you all have my phone number, my email, my address. Please just send me a message telling me that so that we as homeowners know what our options are, because we're just stuck. And the longer, I mean, if you're just stonewalling us and not giving us, we can't, we can't strategize about how we can protect our property rights. So I'd ask that you please do me that courtesy. Thank you.
Okay. Ginger, could you bring on Izzy Iconis and Sienna? I'm going to mess up the last name, remember? Lucy? Yep.
You should be able to unmute and speak at this time.
Hello, this is Sienna Rambellos, it is the Iconis.
Hello, you'll have three minutes. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Izzy Iconis.
And I'm Sienna Rambellos. We are softball players that live in Dunwoody and are here tonight seeking your support for the inclusion of girls basketball fields in Dunwoody.
As we are sure, you are aware, other than one field at Murphy Camler Park and Brookhaven, there is not a single field anywhere in North DeKalb County public park that is sized for girls over the age 12 to play softball on.
As you are also aware, there are two new baseball fields added to Brook Run Park with artificial turf and not lightning, lighting, but only are configured for use by boys' baseball, not softball. We are here to, to try and level the playing field for us as we age up this year.
You may not know this, but there are some girls at our age that have to drop out of softball because of the lack of field time to get better and practice with our teams.
Softball means a lot to us, and it helps make, it helps us make friends, be active and build good trust relationships with your teammates. But not having a lot of fields means that you have limited time to practice with your teammates and get better as a team.
Sports are great for building relationships and self-esteem, something all teenage girls need. Please build us a softball field in Dunwoody.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Albert Wang? That's okay. No judgment on our part. All right, just make sure you will speak in the microphone and start with your name, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Madam Mayor, esteemed members of the City Council, department staff. My name is Albert Wang. I live at 5676 Mill Trace Drive. I'm here to discuss the stormwater pipe work that was completed in 2019 in the Ben Creek Mill Trace area in your vicinity of Dunwoody Club Drive. With commercial and multifamily developments going up within the city, I would hope that the city projects adhere to the same rules that you would put onto those developers, the same ordinances, the same statutes, things such as Georgia Rule 391-3-7, erosion and sediment control. The Georgia EPD Storm Management Manual outlines best practices, best management practices to prevent erosion control and sediment infiltration into Georgia streams and waters. I would hope that the city designed a stormpipe change that took into consideration water volume, pipe sizing, pipe slope. I hope that the city would have measured pre-construction what the flow out, outflow discharge foot per second rate is, and post-construction what that foot per second rate is. Those two should match up on a retrofit project such as this. The DeKalb County Storm Water Management Checklist is about seven pages long with about 50 different design criteria questions, and I hope that the city would have reviewed that and complied with those, you know, with this project in the city's stormwater management policy. They say they adhere to that DeKalb County guideline. I hope that the design engineers, consultants, technical advisors hired by the city would have gone through a full stormwater management design for this pipe retrofit. The water coming through the pipe is, was identified as a tributary to the Ball Mill Creek by the city's civil engineer. I hope that rework of the slope and of the pipe would have received the proper buffer variance and buffer approvals from the Georgia EPD. You know, as neighbors around Ben Creek and Mill Trace, you know, all we ask is that the city, when they do a project, they abide by the same rules and guidelines that they would put on a developer building within the city. I think if a developer were to introduce that type of sediment and excess water flow on any one of their developments, the city would be upset about that type of uncontrolled water, and they would ask them to correct-
20 seconds remaining.
-that and make that comply with our current rules and regulations. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it, and good luck. Talk to you soon.
Thank you. David Daniels? Same thing, if you just get some microphone, introduce yourself, and you'll have three minutes.
Very good. My name is David Daniels, 1427 Lockhold Court. So I'm here to speak about this. I'll give you some diagrams here.
No, no, just normally, just leave them for us. Thank you.
Well, what I'd like to point out is that going back to 2016, the, the ZBA and the City Council gave a variance to allow for the condo complex at Dunwoody Village to be constructed. It has a 44% stream buffer variance to allow for incursion into the stream buffer. Right now, so that's 44% is about 42 feet. Currently, there's a building that's 33 feet, so there's an incursion of about nine feet. And the city has known that for a long time. The next thing is that there's supposed to be two rows of staggered evergreen trees between the condos and the stream. There's very few. The city has just told me that they're not going to enforce it. So I'm left really with a very large building in my backyard. I really wonder how, how this came to be because four and a half years ago, I started communicating with city staff and then mayor. He was very aware because he actually came over, said that he did not want DeKalb County Superior Court involved. So I don't know where you go from here because nothing is in compliance. That is all. I do have some pictures. They built right up to the stream's edge, I mean, right to the bank, and I do have pictures. Nobody from the city has come out except for the arborist, Amy, who basically said, you know, there's no room to put trees in, even though there's, they were supposed to be.
20 seconds remaining.
So I would like your help. I know that if I built a structure in the stream buffer illegally or out of compliance, it would have to be torn down. So I am requesting that these buildings that are not in compliance be moved. There's no other way. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you could give the documents to Brittany right there, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay.
She'll make sure we get them. Thank you. All right. I, Ginger, I don't have any more cards here. Can you confirm that there's no one on Zoom?
If you would like to speak, please raise your hand. I still see no hands raised in the Zoom application.
Thank you. We will have public comment at the end of the meeting if anyone desires. Thank you. Next is consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Joe. Move by Joe, seconded by Stacy. Just pointing out that the emergency ordinance begins the day the current one expires. We will not meet again before the expiration of the current one, so this allows us to do hybrid through February. All right, is there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, there's a motion on the floor. I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously, Sharon. Do we have an agenda change? Joe, go ahead.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'd like to propose that business item, action item number nine, Al Fresco Grant be moved under discussion items.
Okay.
So I'll run a number that and order that.
We will just put it, sorry, Michael Starling, at the end of discussion, just to make it simple. So I think you need, you made a motion, right? So need a second?
I have a question.
Sure.
Oh, second. Okay, question?
Are we moving it to discussion items in order to not take action?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm just trying to understand that we're not taking-
We're not voting on it tonight.
Okay, thank you. It's my question.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, we need to, oh wait, who seconded it? Oh, maybe nobody. They did. Tom sec, okay. So Sharon, it was Joe's motion to amend the agenda, and Tom seconded it. That's what I thought. All in favor of the motion to amend the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is amended unanimously. Sharon, are you going to read the resolution?
Hello?
We can hear you now.
You can hear me now?
Yes. We need you to read number five.
Yes.
Okay.
An ordinance to amend the zoning conditions of Land Lot 347, District 18, in consideration of zoning case RZ-21-0241, Ravinia Parkway, to authorize a variance from the street frontage requirement.
All right. Madeline, I believe you're presenting.
Good evening, Mayor and the council. This case was first heard at a public hearing on January 10th, where you all expressed some concerns, and in response to those concerns, staff amended the recommendations. We changed our conditions to require a raised mid-block crosswalk across Ravinia Drive. We increased protections for the trees and required a public arc and/or wayfinding signage installation. However, between the January 10th meeting and today's meeting, there was not adequate time to truly collaborate with the applicant to address all of the concerns related at the January 10th meeting. And due to this, we're requesting deferral to the February 14th meeting to allow the applicant and staff more time to address y'all's concerns. You have any questions? I'm available.
Does anybody have any questions?
We have a motion to defer.
Moved by you.
I'd like to make a motion to defer. One second.
Moved, the motion to defer moved by John, seconded by Rob. Kathy, I presume y'all are okay with this?
Yeah, we really appreciate you deferring it, and I think we'll be able to answer all of your issues.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor of a deferral of this item. Oh, wait, we have to put a date.
February 14th.
Okay, thank you. February 14th. So deferring this item to February 14th. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, Sharon, that passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Mayor, the next item is number six under business items is the ESRI three-year renewal. That is Ginger LaPage.
Hello. So I actually have the next three items.
Yes.
The first one is the ESRI contract. This is a three-year contract for our GIS mapping software. This software actually works with our City Works and several other applications that we utilize for the city, and this would be a three-year renewal for the not to exceed total of $116,100. Signing this contract sets the price at $38,700 annually, subject to, of course, budgets annually, and we could break the contract if we needed to for budget reasons.
Anybody? John?
Ginger, is there a, our public-facing GIS system? Does this contract feed into that software? Is that needed for that, or is this over and above? Is there anything? How does it tie in together?
So when you go to the mapping page on the website and you see all the amazing maps that exist there that you get to interact with and everything, that is ESRI. So ESRI is actually the ArcGIS, it's the Arc map, it's the software that our GIS people use, it's, it's the whole kit and caboodle, it's all of it.
Correct. And then this software will allow that public-facing service to continue for the next three years.
That's correct, yes.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else have a question? This is an action item.
Move to approve.
Moved by John.
Second.
Seconded by Stacy. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, Sharon, that passes unanimously. Sharon, just let us know when you're ready for Ginger to go on to the next one.
I am ready.
Okay.
Fortified data renewal.
Mayor and council, this is, we're bringing this to council because this is a contract with Inerdive. Inerdive provides a managed service contract for us at this time for our IT department, and we felt that we should bring this to mayor and council to approve because this is in excess of our managed service contract. It is only $18,518, so it is within the city manager's approval, but we did want to make sure that you guys were aware of this. It's the fortified data. It's a risk management platform that we use for security reasons, and we would just ask that you, you approve this as well so that we can continue with the security side.
Okay, does anybody? Joe?
What, can you give me an example, what, what this is used for, Ginger? Just from a end-user perspective, or what's the benefit?
This is-
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is actually something that they use on the backside from a security perspective, so end-users would never really see any of it happening. It alerts the security team to any kind of issues that might arise before they would actually know it. So it's kind of a monitoring-type system. It's a risk management, it's kind of a risk management platform. I don't unfortunately have specific details as to all of the things that it provides beyond, this is something that they strongly believe has helped us.
I'm not asking for a separate presentation to council, but if you get something, if you just email it to us, just for curiosity, what it, what it, what's the real value benefit of this? Just, just to know, for my knowledge, I'd appreciate that.
Certainly.
Great, thank you. No, no other questions, thanks.
Okay. Anybody else? This is an action item.
Move to approve.
Moved by John.
Second.
Seconded by Joe. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, Sharon, that passes unanimously.
The next item on the agenda is a request to sell surplus technology to the city of Dorville. This is also Ginger.
So this item is actually something that I'm kind of excited about. Sharon actually had brought this to us. Joe had asked at one point, when we were surplusing some items, if we could find anybody that could use these items and that we could make use of them beyond their, you know, their use here for Dunwoody. And Sharon actually did find an agency that needs these items. So I'm pretty excited to, you know, to put this up and, and to request that we sell these items to the city of Dorville. They are aware that they do not have hard drives in them, so the Dorville will have to purchase hard drives because we have to destroy the hard drives based on the data that's on them, and they do not have Windows operating systems on them either. So Dorville will have to purchase that, but it is still, you know, it'll be a much better situation for them. It is equipment that they desperately need, and it is 48 police laptops, 81 monitors, 71 desktops and laptops, and 25 other technology items this time that we're requesting to sell to the city of Dorville for a dollar.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Go ahead.
Move to approve.
Moved by John.
Second.
Seconded by Tom. We are very good neighbors. That's nice, nice to help our neighbors out. Thank you for making this happen, Ginger and whoever else. With that, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, Sharon.
The next item is contract approval for the Brookline Park lighting project with Georgia Power. Brent Walker.
Evening, Mayor and council. My agenda item is a returning item from back in November of last year. We brought forth a contract approval for- We brought forth a contract approval for new lights to go in and the remaining areas of Brooklyn Park that weren't lit during our construction project of the amphitheater and great lawn. The new quote is attached in your packet. We were able to negotiate a better rate with them, even though there's a slight increase in the down payment, where our monthly rate is, is improved by $471 per month. This is also with the addition of 72 outlets to be attached to 72 of the poles, which will help us with our events and holiday lights and things like that around the front lawn and, and down the main drive of the park. It's a total of 157 lights, 12-foot poles and 30-foot poles for the drive lanes and the parking lots. And Jay Benicki was able to allocate $800,000 of the cares to Act Fund money towards the down payment, which is now $784,200. With that, I'll open it up to any questions y'all may have.
John?
Thank you, Brent. I've been looking at it from the, the blue line is the path going around. And I want to make sure that the Village Drive folks, that there's no lighting that goes, spills over into that community. That's really down-facing on the path itself.
That's correct. These are only 12-foot poles that are going along the pathway. They're not the 30-foot overhead poles. So they would only be illuminating 12-foot off the ground along the path.
Thank you. And then as far as Peeler Road, we just put a huge investment from sidewalks along the path, along the edge of the park. Is there any thought of any lighting along the sidewalks, along the northwest corner of Peeler Road sidewalk going along park?
I, I can't speak to what's out in the right of way, but we will have lights that are in that new section of sidewalk that connects along Peeler, where the trail doubles as the sidewalk. There are light poles along that section in the wooded area.
I was thinking the wooded area, a little closer to Adams Road. You know how there's the three houses that they're right there on Peeler? It's a very dark segment of sidewalk. I'm just trying to figure out, since we've put that sidewalk in, is there any lighting opportunities for that segment of the walking path that's now the sidewalk along Brook Run on the Albert Skirts?
Yeah, if, if you're speaking of the, the walking path in Brook Run, they all will have 12-foot poles on it. Every section of the trail will have a, a 12-foot pedestrian pole.
Yeah, I guess I'm really looking for an expansion of lighting on Peeler Road. If you look at Peeler Road, we put new sidewalk in, in that section of the park. It's very dark in that segment. There are no streetlights. And I don't know if it makes any sense, if there's any way to even think about an expansion of sidewalk lighting in that section of Peeler Road, which is, again, very dark.
I, I can work with Michael Smith on that and see what his plans are for lighting that section. We're asking for $800,000 tonight for a contingency portion of that $784,200. So I can, I can give him Michael and see what he has planned. And if there's some available funds in that $16,000, maybe we can add some additional lights out there also.
Well, thank you. I'm excited for the lighting of Brook Run. I think this is a, really a wonderful investment into our park system. So thank you. And as far as Peeler, someday I hope there are lights on Peeler. I really like the lights on Vermac that are there along the newer community, the very nice light poles, something. I'm just trying to look for lights on Peeler as well, as a slight upgrade, if we could find a few funds to upgrade it. But I think this is a wonderful addition to the park. So thank you for your service and thank you for doing this quote.
Anybody else?
Hey Brent, thanks for responding to my email. I just sent it on the council too, just for background. As when you first presented this, I asked about the possibility of also connecting over to Purnishaw in that park area. It wasn't part of the initial bid. I'd like to ask my peers if we could look for additional funding and so on. I'd love to see what we could do to continue that and have it lit all the way through there. Brent, I just want to make that comment. And then from the street light on Peeler, you know, we have some other unlit areas in the community that are not necessarily neighborhood lighting where neighborhoods would apply to. So I think that raises it to, have a separate discussion to make sure we identify all those areas and identify how we could fund, fund those as well holistically for the city. But I'm excited to see this happen. And I'm a big proponent of saying trails as transportation as well as recreation and lighting it makes it one more step that way. So thank you.
Anybody else? Go ahead Stacy.
I'm just happy that we are including the, the outlets and the poles. Because that will just help make the park that much more active.
Anybody else? So Brent, I have a question, and I'm struggling with the map, which is fine. Where the farmer's market is, is there gonna be new poles?
Yes, that, so that, wow, I have a map. My map disappeared. Yes, the, we, we'll play, be putting in new 30-foot tall poles in those parking lots. And then pedestrian lighting up around the Veterans Memorial in that area. So it'd be, it will be much better illuminated once it's done.
And, and the plugs and the 30-foot poles as well?
Yes, so we have 42 outlets that will be in all the 12-foot poles around the front oval and playground area. So all 42 of those 12-foot poles will be, have outlets on. Then 30 of the 30-foot poles throughout the park, mainly down the main drive and then on the road going out towards Peeler. And then all the 30-foot poles in the parking lot where food truck Thursday is.
Okay, and you can ma- make sure some of that's by where the farmer's market is, the plug?
Yes.
That's a big deal for them.
Yeah, we just wired in multiple outlets along that fence where the farmer's market is. So there's wide boxes already wired in over there.
All right. Thank you, this is great. And thanks for everybody doing the math a few weeks ago and figuring out that this was the way to go. Any further discussion, comments?
Moved to approve.
Moved by Joe. Second by Tom. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, this motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
The next item on the agenda is approval of a contract amendment with Blunt Construction for additional pavement marking, Michael Smith.
Evening, this item is a ratification of some funds that we spent last year. We were approached by GDOT last spring to, with some safety funds that they had available. They were for specific roadways that they had identified as high-crash roadways. And they were for a specific purpose, which was, you know, pavement marking, the, the pavement reflectors and sign replacement for retro reflectivity. So we had to act quick on this and, because they had to get the money obligated. So we, we came up with a, a list of improvements or they're really maintenance-type things because all of this would have had to have been done at some point anyway. And so we were awarded $150,000. We had to match 30% with city funds. And so we completed, under this contract that we had with Blunt, where we already had unit prices for pavement marking and the pavement reflectors. We, we installed that, refreshed the pavement marking and installed the reflectors on Premier Center East, Premier Center Parkway and North Shalford Road. And we also added reflectors on Ashford Dunwoody. And the, the total cost of this additional work, which was, you know, not in the original paving contract for last year, was $151,000. The grant funds covered 105 of that. So the city's contribution was $45,000. And the, the purpose of this item is to ratify the additional funds we spent beyond the originally approved contingency for the Blunt contract because this was work that was added after that contract was approved.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Thank you, Michael. Anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Joe.
And thank, thanks for the email explanation, Michael. As we know, we're kind of gleaning through a lot of documents when we're going through our council packages. So this is budgeted, this was, this is Bunny's already prior budget from the 2021 budget. And then you're just saying we use the excess funds. And this is more or less accounting that we have to do now to just make sure the numbers are all accounted for properly. Is that pretty much right, Michael?
That's right, and we're proposing to, to pay for the city's portion out of our roadway maintenance annual budget since these are really maintenance items.
All right, fine, thank you.
Mike, I have a quick question. So when we did Peeler, it got striped relatively quickly compared to some other projects. Is that just luck? Because I know it's usually a different contractor, right? I know I'm kind of off-subject here, but I'm just curious.
It is a subcontractor usually to the paving contractor. And sometimes it depends on weather or the subcontractor's availability. You know, it does vary a little bit.
Right, and so, okay, thank you. All right, any further questions or discussion?
Moved to approve.
Moved by John.
Second.
Second by Stacy. All in, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Michael. Sharon, that passes unanimously. And then I can, I'll do it from here, Sharon, because we're not voting on anything. Discussion of the Vermac Road Shared Use Path. Michael Smith, this is you as well.
I'm gonna try to share my screen here. Okay, hopefully y'all are, wait, just a minute. Hopefully you can see that?
It's coming, it just takes a second. Yep, now we can see it, thank you.
Okay, I'm presenting a concept plan for the bicycle, for bicycle and pedestrian improvements on Vermac Road in front of Dunwoody High School. The impetus for this project was from actually a citizen report that, about the poles and being in the middle of the sidewalk. You can see here in the picture, they, you know, we, there are several poles down through this stretch. And the sidewalk's about five and a half feet wide. But with the poles in the sidewalk, there's places where that's reduced to three or four feet, which doesn't meet Americans with Disabilities Act requirements, the federal, federal guidelines for minimum width of the sidewalk. Some of these poles carry transmission lines, which are the higher voltage lines usually, which very likely existed prior to the sidewalk. The sidewalk probably came after the poles. And from what we could tell, looking at old aerial imagery, there, the sidewalk at the south end of the school site was probably built around the time, at the same time the high school was. And then the northern end was added sometime in the mid-'80s. So this condition has been out there for a while, but doesn't really meet current standards. Also, the, the curb ramps do not meet current ADA guidelines. So there, there's a few options for addressing these issues. The, the least cost option would be to just meander the side, replace all the ramps and then meander the sidewalk around these poles to, to get the full width sidewalk. But as you can see in the photo here, it would also require rebuilding some smaller retaining walls that are out there. So the other option, again, the second option would be to relocate the entire sidewalk to behind the, the poles and just put a new sidewalk in. But we took the opportunity, if we were gonna look at something like that and said, well, you know, if, if we're gonna rebuild the sidewalk, what if we just made it a wider sidewalk that could accommodate bicycles to basically a path, since we're right there at the school? Similar to what was done recently down on Ashford Dunwoody in front of Montgomery Elementary. One thing I forgot to mention about the poles, we could look at moving the poles, but because they're transmission poles and they're, they were probably there first, usually the estimate to move one of those larger poles is about $100,000 a pole. So it would not, and the city, that's something the city would have to pay for in this case. So the third option we looked at with, with the path option would be contained within the existing right-of-way. There would be some easements needed, shown in green here from the school. The yellow is the path, this is shown as a 12-foot path. There's a little, the green and red between the, the yellow path and the roadway is a three-foot buffer, either grass or where there's terrible parking on the street. It would be like a decorative concrete or some type of hardscape buff, buffer so that people could get in and out of their cars and get to the path. And it would just continue in front of the school. There, we do need to look at the sign and whether that, the school sign would be, if there's enough room there to put the path between the road and the, and the sign. But this would continue up between Womack and Vanderland in, in front of the school. So the, the cost for this is just under, estimated at just under $500,000. We, we took this, put this online and asked for comments from the community last fall. And the majority of the responses we got supported the project. There were some that did not support it. And their main concern seemed to be parking issues in general with the school. There was some concern that we, we would be removing parking. We won't be, be affecting any of the parking out there. There was some concern about trees. We're not planning to, you can see the larger hardwood trees in the area where the students, I think, eat outside or gather sometimes. We're not planning to affect those trees, but there are some trees at the north end of the project near Vanderland, some pine trees that would have to be removed. And then the other preference expressed by those who didn't necessarily support the project was that maybe, you know, they had other priorities for sidewalks in other places. We also talked to the, the principal advisory committee at the school. And their biggest concern was not to do this project during the school year, which we agree this would be something that we would try to accomplish in the, the summer as much as possible. And so just presenting this to council tonight to, for feedback before the next steps would be to move into final design with the goal of trying to build this this summer if we can work out the easements with the school system, you know, this spring.
Can I ask a question first, sort of out of order? I mean, not really out of order, but out of the way I normally do things. So Michael, we talked about the idea of the, the parents advisory committee asked that we slant the parking. And what I think you and I discussed was the cost of that was equivalent to the decking of the retained, something about that, right? So the school-
Yes, we, we did. Yeah, we looked at that option and we could probably add about 12 spaces by changing it to angle parking. But it would require moving the curb. We would need some right-of-way from the school, some property from the school system. And it would, we estimate that it would double the cost of the project. And what I, I think what I told, mentioned before is that, you know, if you look at it on a cost-per-space basis, you know, it really gets to be more expensive than what you usually see the cost for a space in a parking deck.
Right, and a reminder that the school system long ago said they were gonna deck the detention retention pond, whatever the appropriate name is. And this project, they'd get a lot more parking for the money we would spend slanting the parking. So that's just something to keep in mind. Go ahead, John.
I have a question regarding the slanted parking. I understand the need and I can, I want to understand the cost. If, if the slanted parking were to put in, would we still be going with this wide of a path? Or could we do the slanted parking at a lower cost by only having a five-foot sidewalk that goes around the poles? What are we talking about when it comes to the cost?
We, we didn't do that analysis specifically. We, we did the angle parking with the path. You know, we'd have to go back and look at that. I mean, I think you would save some money, but I, I don't know how much at this point.
I'm just figuring that the slanted park, you would be sticking out into the streets. So therefore, you're gonna be, by going another couple feet in, you would save the room on the street and you'd be saving costs because you'd only doing the five-foot minimum. Still be going around the poles. And it would be an overall win-win for the community. We'd meet ADA requirements, we'd have all the ramps. We would put in the extra spots. But again, I don't know about the cost-benefit analysis. Urban, urban gutter would move to, probably, yeah. So I'm just trying to understand, if we only did a five-foot sidewalk there with this landed, is that more cost-effective? So I'm just trying to understand if we only did a five foot sidewalk there with this landed, is that more cost effective or?
Yeah, yeah, we'd have, we'd have to look at that.
So what you're asking is for them to take a look at that?
I would like to take a look at that. If the cost is a better deal, but if it makes sense financially and it's a win-win in the sense of the parking and meeting minimum ADA requirements. And I'm not against the path except for the fact that there's no path or wider sidewalks for the rest of the transportation of sidewalks anywhere on the property on any of the other sides or, you know, from the movement aspect.
But just can I ask a question? Cause you know, I need pictures. But if you do leave the five foot sidewalk, what happens to the utility poles?
You leave them, you go around them. If you can, there might be, might screw up one or two spots, but.
Okay, that's fine. I think it's worth looking into. I mean, that's fine to look into it if you can, Michael.
Thank you.
Yeah, probably what you would do with the utility poles is this is how we had it with the the angle parking option that we looked at. Is you would just, those space, you would lose those spaces because you would basically build an island around that pole. It would sit in an island. I, I don't know if I can share this rough concept, but I pulled up, because we did sketch out the angle parking and I know we can run the analysis. I'm not sure how much money it would save you because you'll still have to move the curb. And it's even with the narrower sidewalk, you would still need property from the school system. And so the, the main, you'd be saving a little bit on property cost and a little bit on concrete costs for the wider path. But, but we can see if we can refine that a little bit.
Thank you. John, anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Joe. Oh, no, I like.
Go down this way. Sure. So I do know that in our budget for twenty twenty-two in the CIP, it just says it says Vermac Road, Vanderland and Womack ADA improvements. And there's five hundred K in the budget. It's set aside. So we set aside two hundred K in twenty-one and three hundred K in the current year. So I mean, like, okay, is it ADA improvements? Is it meaning that? Fine, because I, I'm looking at as much as I'm a trail proponent. Do we really need a trail there? Because what's to the north of it, what's to the south of it? It doesn't connect to anything. So if we just achieve the, what are we, what are we trying to achieve? Have it more safer to walk? And, and so on and navigate through there? You know, I'd, I'd be fine with whatever that needs to be versus a quote unquote multi-use path there. So that's just my two cents on that. And then angle parking, I think going on Vermac there, if you're backing out and you don't see things coming from behind you, I see that as very dangerous issue on a high speed unless everybody's going fifteen miles an hour. And everybody's watching out or they're gonna have patrol officers dedicated there when they're backing out. Now, there is a thing called angled back in. You literally could, you back, go backwards and you back into a parking. Google it, angled back in, and then you're coming out, you're looking at where you're going. Now, that's a little advanced. You'd have to have the first week of every class, every year, teach them how to do that. You know, and then, and then, and then so on and so forth. So that's just one other thing, but otherwise, hey, um, we've got five hundred K in the bank right now. If you can do it for less than that, fine. Thanks.
Anything, Stacy?
I guess from my point of view, I was pleasantly surprised to see the path design because it, well, it is a, it is a section, it's also a section that then leads down to a city park and there, then you make a right and you're heading to an elementary school and the front of that high school is, I mean, it's congestion with people and bikes and to and from. So I actually do see a need for a wider path there. Angle parking versus parallel parking, I mean, these kids can't park anyway, so. Right? But I would, I, you know, I do would like to go, go down the, the, the path that John suggested, at least do an analysis, but I also am kinda here with Joe saying and like these kids backing up into a thirty-five mile an hour street that we know has a speeding problem on it already is, is rather terrifying as well. I don't know what the answer is there.
Okay, Catherine, do you have any other questions?
Yes, Michael, just a question about what happens when we try to take school property? Are we buying that property to get more of the parking? Is that how that's working?
Yes, they operate under the same laws we do as far as they can't give away property. So we would have to pay for it or swap it or somehow whatever the appraised value of the property or the easements or we would have to pay that or give something in return to offset that cost.
So that'll be, you know, as we talk about taking more of the school property, that's gonna be very expensive? Is that what we're?
Yes, it would be more expensive.
But prohibitively expensive? Is that, you know, is that like a deciding point for this parking?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I mean, if we, because right now we budgeted for those temporary easements. If we had to actually get property, yeah, it would be beyond what's currently budgeted for the project.
Okay, so this, as shown or as you presented, is for easements where we would not be buying property?
Yes, the, the green, kind of the green striped area shown there behind, but between the school and the path is the temporary easement area that we need to build it. And temporary easements are valued at a lot less than, you know, actually buying property.
Would there be any pushback from the school for easements?
I don't, I don't anticipate any, but.
Don't ask, don't ask.
All right, thank you.
All right, I'm gonna, I guess, drift slightly to the side of this issue for a second. So we've got this design for this, this path here and several of the other council members have raised the, the observation that right now this is a standalone segment. And I like the idea of, you know, kind of a more multi-use path here. I'm just curious if you could give me like the one minute synopsis of what else we have planned for pedestrian and bike transportation improvements in the immediate vicinity. And then Joe's comment about the amount budgeted versus the amount in this proposal, kind of you know, piqued my interest because that leads to a question of is there a way, since we have some funds kind of already at least in a, from a planning conceptual standpoint earmarked for work in this area where we could extend some of the improvements maybe further to the south. I know there's a lot of concerns, for example, with the, the crosswalk, the next intersection south of Womack. If there's a way to extend, work down with that or if that might be drifting off topic here too much.
No, you're fine.
Anyway, so if you could.
Just the big picture of what's planned for the area.
And then if there's a way to maybe extend to, to do some safety improvements, a little bit further south of there.
Sure. Yeah, there's, of course, we have bike lanes on Womack and that's kind of the long-term plan there. For the, for, as far as paths go, if you look at our our path plan or bike plan for the city, it does show a path going down Vanderland. You know, all the way to the end of Vanderland and possibly connecting to something there. And then you know, extending up Vermac, past the high school up towards Mount Vernon and of course now we're we're planning, working on design for a path along Mount Vernon. The, the future piece on Vermac and Vanderland are not something we have planned anytime soon, but it is in the long-range plan. And then on the south side of Womack, we're working on design for sidewalk and bike lanes down Vermac. And the reason we didn't propose a path there when we discussed that project last year was that when you get south of Womack, there's a section there where there's driveways about every hundred feet on both sides and it becomes more of a safety concern with a path when you have frequent driveway crossings and potential for for people to be looking one way and a bike coming the other way and they, they hit. So we you know, the, the guy, best practice is where you have a lot of driveways spaced closely together that the path's probably not the best option, but we are planning bike lanes on that segment. And that's in design right now.
And, and then just, what about other pedestrian safety features? In, in terms for like the, the crosswalk there?
Yeah, that, the, built into that sidewalk design and, and bike lane that we're working on is a refuge island crossing at, at Parliament and then also one at the, the Future Park. You know, where you have the island in the middle of the road that breaks up to crossing and hopefully will help discourage speeding. So that's built into that design for the sidewalk and bike lane project.
And then the rough timeline, is that, you know, three year, one year, five year?
Yeah, that's, that one's in design now and I think it's programmed in the capital, five-year capital budget for twenty twenty-four for construction.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, thank you. So, yeah, I'll, I'll talk, it's already been talked about. I'll just touch briefly on the angled parking. I'm certainly open to the idea of exploring, as John suggested, alternatives. Always best to have all the information before we make decisions. However, with that said, I, I would, and big surprise to anyone that knows me, I would be strongly opposed to reducing the size of the trail there. Despite the fact that we don't currently have multi-use trail segments connecting there, we do have other facilities as we just talked about south of Vermac. I'm sorry, south of Womack that we're gonna be connecting to there. And we'll, we'll never, if, if that's our mindset with building trails, we'll never build trails because they don't exist. So we're gonna have to build them in segments and again, I'll use this as a little stump for my comprehensive trail plan for the city where if we have that, we'll know where, where segments of those trails will be and where they can connect to each other. So I'd also argue even if there is no connectivity of trails to this area, the simple congregation of people in front of the school, I think, would warrant the twelve foot trail. You'll, you'll have students getting out of cars. You have just a general congregation, congregation of students and parents and, and other people in front of the school. I think that would, uh, there would be a tremendous value and safety element to having that segment there. If we're gonna invest in trails, obviously near schools is a place that I would highly prioritize doing that. So everything we can do to keep that twelve foot, I'm all on board with that. And also just to put in perspective, I, I echo the mayor's sentiment about the, the, the cost of the parking spots. You know, the, the school system could very easily solve that problem by building a deck over a very ugly, ugly pond. We'd be solving a lot of problems by doing that. You know, to add twelve parking spots, those twelve parking spots would cost roughly forty-two thousand dollars apiece. I, I understand the value of parking for anyone that drives to the high school, but that's, that's a pretty hefty price tag for a parking spot. So just to put that all in perspective. I want to go back to the public comments, just to address one concern that was raised about parallel parking on the streets and opening doors. Looking at the plan, it looks like there's a three foot buffer from the curb to where the trail begins. So I just want to clarify that that concern really wouldn't apply here because with that buffer, you wouldn't have a door opening up into the, into the trail. Would that be an accurate statement, Michael?
Yeah, that's correct. You, you'll have three feet between, you know, the car and anybody on the path.
Okay, um, the next thing is dealing with potential easements and relocations of utilities specific to the school system. My, my understanding is we have not begun to speak with the Kent County School District yet. Is that correct?
Other than our meeting with the principal advisory committee, we haven't talked to them yet about the sign or the utilities. That, that all needs to still be worked out in the next design, phase of design.
Yeah, my, I, I understand the, the the reasons for having a, a full plan for doing that. However, in my experience in dealing with the school system, but really in any case, you know, we're, we're dealing with I, I agree with the timeline. I'm trying to do it this summer. If we haven't begun talking to the school system yet, that is a incredibly optimistic timeline in my opinion. I, I do believe we need to start securing that as soon as we can with or without a final plan. Just, just knowing the time it takes to get a resolution to those issues. I, and I, I do think it's, it's vitally important to get this done when school is not in session. So I would just encourage a conversation start immediately with the school system. And on that same topic, I know in the plan there's something identified as a water hot box or something like that. Is that strictly, is that a meter? Is that? Up, yeah, you're, you're right on the spot there, up near Vanderland Drive. It, it looks like it would be in the, it's like a green box that sits up. It looks like it would be in the area where we'd need to put the, the sidewalk. Is that something the school system controls? Is that a utility thing? Is that supplying water or power to the, the trailer there? What, what do we know about that box?
Not sure about the box. I know the hydrant, we would control the relocation of that, but have to find out more about that box and what its function is there.
Because that would be another concern of mine. That box, and I believe there's a big power ugly power thing strapped to some wooden things that's supplying power for the other trailers. I don't know if that would be in our way at all, but obviously, again, doing this during the summer, but if any utilities are gonna have to be moved that are supplying power to the trailers, that becomes a not a, not a want, but a need because we can't turn off power to those trailers during the school year and depending on how long that takes, that could be a complication. So I want to make sure that we're kind of getting ahead of the curve on that stuff and anticipating potential delays so that we, we can avoid potential problems when we, when we hopefully start construction this summer. But that, that, that's all my own question. I just wanna, I do want to emphasize, please, 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 let's start stalking with the Kent County School District as soon as possible.
Okay.
So Chief, just a quick question to put you on the spot. You don't have to run on the whistle here. Do you have any thoughts about parallel, not parallel, diagonal parking in this situation?
Well, I, I think as some of you already said, they can be pretty dangerous because of the depending on the angle, when you back up, it's very difficult to see behind you. And so you're depending on whoever is coming down the road to stop. And of course, a lot of cars have backup cameras now and things that, that help with that are the the backup indicators. So it may not be a problem with, for some vehicles, but I think it could be a problem for others.
Right. Thank you.
And any experienced driver.
Right. And so my take on it is, is that if you've ever been at the school at dismissal time, there's way too much traffic and no one's gonna let them back up. And if, and it would be really disruptive. So you think about the parallel parking spaces, although every now and then I've seen them do a U-turn, which irritates me, they generally pull out and go straight. And so they're able to keep going. In this case, there's so much traffic unless you limit them to the kids who have extracurricular activities or something and they can't do it right at dismissal, which we don't want to manage. All right, so to Tom's point, we're not building this this summer. There's just no way that unless we approved it, if we were ready to approve it or we I, I am skeptical that the school system will get this on it. They only meet once a month, by the way. So we've missed their January meeting. We likely, we were not gonna be ready for their February meeting. And so I'm a big believer in under promising and over delivering and in between that and material supplies and utility movement, I think we just have to plan that this isn't gonna happen this summer. I mean, we're welcome to proceed and make the decisions. Michael, I think it's really important we make the decisions, but to Tom's point and also our current reality perhaps with the school system, I don't think they're gonna be in a hurry to get this done. And so, you know, I agree that it's critical. It has to really be built and complete in the summer. And so I just want to put that out there as what I think is reality. I hate to be a bucket of wet noodles, but the experiences I've had over the last, I wish I was wrong. How's that? Tom, what about you? Right. And so when I'm thinking of the calendar and the fact that they literally meet once a month, I'm just not sure that they'll be, even if they intended to get it done, that we would know before April.
Listen, if we get it done by the end of the summer, I will bring champagne to the ribbon cutting.
Yes, you cannot because it's on school property, but nice try. Right, right away. Okay, all right. So, Michael, have we given you any guidance?
I, I, I agree that trying to get it done this summer would be very tight. And so we can come back with some, some better answers on angle parking with a narrower sidewalk if you'd like, and then we can go from there.
Okay, just bring us options. And to be fair to anyone listening, I'm not sure we could turn it around that fast in Dunwoody. Like I, I just think that's a really short window to turn it around. So all right, thank you. Deputy Chief Carlson, you are up next. It'll be Chief Grogan. Oh, it'll be Chief Grogan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to discuss the replacement of our Taser X2s with the purchase of Taser 7s. Uh, we've had the X2s for some time and they are reaching the end of their useful life and their support from, uh, Taser or from Axon. Uh, the X2s were have their batteries, they're, they're built in batteries and they're going bad. So we're having to send them back to the factory as well as, uh, uh, the technology is not as good as the Taser 7s. And what we don't want is a failure on one of our tasers when we need it, uh, for the officers in the field. The Taser 7s are the, uh, updated, uh, newest, uh, tasers, uh, from Axon. And one of the big benefits of, uh, these devices is they will, when you turn the taser on, uh, it will activate all the body cameras, uh, that's within a certain radius of the officers as well as their in-car cameras. And so that's an added feature that will make sure all the body cameras are on. Um, and the cost for this is $230,404. And, uh, this, uh, as I understand it, there are funds available, according to finance and SPOS funds, uh, for this purchase. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, I'll start at this end. Tom, you have any questions? Anybody?
Yeah. Chief, just one question. How often do your officers deploy tasers in a given week or month?
Let's see, um, I'll have the yearly amount. Uh, pretty soon we do a yearly report, but, uh, probably once a week, maybe, um, maybe twice. And they actually display them a lot more than they actually, um, discharge them. Uh, because a lot of times, uh, once they display them and say they've got a taser, uh, a lot of times the people will give up. They don't want to be tased. And so, uh, probably once or twice a week.
Chief, I thought I remembered from our discussion, um, with us, with, uh, with, with John and I, that these new ones also have the yellow handle.
Yes.
Which is an added level of security and safety for our officers. And I think that is important for council to know as well.
Yeah, the one, uh, the one we currently have has a black handle and the officers carry that on, not on the same side as their weapon. They carried on the opposite side and cross draw it. And, but this one, there's been a couple of incidents, uh, across the country where officers have used their tasers and thought they were using their gun. Uh, I'm sorry, they use their, they're, they thought they were using their ta, uh, their taser, uh, but they use their gun. And, uh, so we don't want that to happen, certainly.
Buddy, Joe?
Just, um, Budget Chief, was this, is, we have funds allocated? Was this already in our, we were expecting to do this? Is it 22 to budget or?
No, it was not. It was not budgeted. It was something that we realized that we needed and brought it forward to the city manager and, uh, the council committee that meets with the police department. They asked us to bring them forward.
Do we show, so sometimes on some of these memos, we'll show the fund that it's coming from, is what the current balance?
Lost.
The next one, but, okay. So, um, I guess if we could get what that fund balance is available and show what the amount is balanced after this. I mean, we're just saying it's available in SPOS. So this is just, we're saying this is unallocated SPOS funding for 2022. So we have a bucket. I don't know how much is in that bucket right now. Do we happen to know what's available? I'm just curious.
Hey, do you know? Or lend us on sort of?
This is a discussion item, so we can get that by next week.
We can get it by the next, you don't have to, you can just bring it, put it in the memo for the next meeting, please.
Perfect. All right. Thanks.
Thank you. Johnny, anything?
No, this is a very important item that, uh, should be approved. And, uh, Chief, as far as the activation of the cameras, that goes not on the, the vis, making the visible, but there's a button or is it when it's activated, when you pull the trigger? Is that when it does it?
No, when you pull it from the holster.
So when you pull it from the holster, so it's, you'll have video then of every time it's pulled from the holster. So you'll have a video, a lot more video for the circumstantial.
Well, the majority of the time the officers, if, if that's kind of situation, they already have their body cameras deployed, they're already on. But it is a manual process to turn them on. So occasionally we do have someone that forgets to turn on their camera. This would activate.
Automatically. Okay.
Automatically.
Again, another win-win for the city. I'm looking forward to approving this. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Jay Venicki on HR.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, today I want to talk to a little bit about staffing matters. Um, before this item that we're going to discuss today is about adding an additional HR position. Currently the city has two. Uh, as a director and it has a generalist. Before COVID, we actually were saying that we were at the two plus, we were about to hit the threshold where we might need a third. We were saying that in 2019, we didn't think we need to bring it in 2020. However, with the onset of COVID, the HR workload has been one of the departments that has had an unexpected increase. And it primarily deals with things along with contact tracing and things related to following federal guidelines. It's also given us now a department that used to could kind of say, hey, it's a weekend, not much will happen. Well, guess what? We have police officers who are 24/7 operation. They are exposed to people who have tests, we have to start with contact tracing and the like. So internally, we started to come up with different ways of attacking this problem. And at first we started to look at trying to hire part-time help with it. However, we also now have another thing with this. That's the market pressure in a lot of occupations. And human resources is one of those that it would be almost impossible us for, to find somebody part-time off the street to help us with this. So we talked a little bit more, noodled it out and came up with a temporary, I'm calling it a limited term position to extend through this year and next year. Because at that point, either we will need it or we won't need it and we'll let the position expire. We did much the same way with an, uh, position within finance, which will handle all of the federal funding, the ARP funding that we're going to get. It just is the volume of transactions and the like. So in this case, this is one of those, we knew two years ago or three years ago that we were about to hit the threshold for a third person. And staff is recommending that the council look at it and say, let's go ahead and do it for this year and next year. And if in the summer of 2023, there is no work, we'll be the first to come to you and say, we'll let the position naturally expire in the next year. Funding wise, we're wanting to use CARES 2, which is part of the money that we used, basically the CARES 1 money for those that, that aren't familiar with it. We, um, used it to pay police salaries and took all that money and put it in a separate fund, basically lockboxed it for things that are associated with COVID, which may not be exactly CARES related. Like in other words, the letter of the law, but this hits the spirit of the law because if it wasn't for COVID, this, this workload would not be coming to you as it is. So that's why we come to you right now and I'll take questions at this time.
Anybody? Joe?
Do you see that? So what, what, I'm looking at the ratios. If you look online, for smaller organizations have a higher ratio of HR support to FTEs. So it's somewhere, you know, it ranges between three and one and a half per 100. So we're kind of leaning toward that. Yeah, we're at that critical mass now. Two is just not cutting it.
And as I always say, it's, it's the point out of the two that we have in human resources, both cannot be off on the same day. And that, that becomes just a nightmare in some situations.
Now, is this going to be an in-house W2?
Yes, it will.
Good. Okay. I like it. Thanks.
Anybody else? So, um, to be clear, there's a chance we could, not that it totally matters, but we could use that. This might be a good fit for ARP, right?
It could. In all things we're doing with CARES now, if, when we finally sit down and do ARP, we will work with it then. But what I will do is progress just as if it can.
Right. Okay, that's fine. And it fits for CARES as well. All right. Any, uh, consent? Okay, consent next time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Starling?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, um, and Council. Uh, apologize for the less than thorough agenda item tonight. Uh, we'll, we'll get, uh, details between now and the, and the next meeting. But to give a little bit of, uh, background, city council approved the Alfresco Grant Program on November 4th, 2020 as part of an overall economic assistance package using federal CARES funding. So some of that $5 million that, uh, DeKalb County gave the city. The goal of the grant was to assist restaurants and other businesses to make necessary improvements to move operations outdoors. Uh, a secondary goal was to begin transforming our older shopping centers into more vibrant and welcoming places. Uh, the grant matched funding for businesses as they made changes to their buildings and purchased equipment like heaters. Uh, at the time, the grant was capped at $5,000, uh, per business. So it was a one-to-one match up to 10,000, 5,000 from the city, 5,000 from the business. Uh, we have found that, uh, local businesses have not been using, um, the grant program. Only eight grants were awarded for a total of $24,000. So we began reaching out to property owners to see if they would be interested in applying on behalf of a number of restaurants at the same time. We thought maybe the application process, the time involved was precluding some businesses, uh, taking advantage. So we began talking to the Shops of Dunwoody. They have a master plan to renovate the entire shopping center uh, and would like to include a number of new outdoor, uh, dining spaces that would be dispersed throughout the center. Uh, they're requesting approval of an Alfresco Grant in the amount of $113,000 to help fund the furniture and fixtures for these outdoor areas. Um, that would assist eight current restaurants, possibly a ninth on the way, and nearly a dozen other businesses directly. The, uh, the investments contemplate in this application are significantly larger than the individual grants we previously approved, but are in line with the goals of the original program. Um, obviously, we've been advocating for these types of investments for years. And anytime, uh, one of our local property owners is interested in, in sort of transforming their properties, we would like to be there as a partner. Uh, although the investments in the courtyard around barn use funding from the Development Authority, uh, they are very similar in that we're investing alongside a property owner to help reposition an older commercial property to compete in the new retail environment. And in fact, the barn project was what got us thinking about, um, going directly to the property owners. So between now and, and the, and the 14th of the next meeting, staff will, um, will be, at that time, we will be requesting a change to the Alfresco Program to include larger investments, um, with updated goals, um, and requirements for that money. And we'll be asking for authorization to execute the grant with the Shops of Dunwoody. So I'd be happy to take questions at this time.
Start down here.
Uh, yeah, thank, uh, thank you, Michael. Um, let me, let me just start by saying, you know, in principle, I, I think this is great. I mean, obviously the whole purpose of this is to support our local business. Um, and not only is this supporting the businesses, but it's activating a space that desperately needs it. So all of those things, I mean, we've actually seen there in the Shops of Dunwoody, what, uh, you know, what primarily Porter Q has done down on their end of activating a space that was unused and how popular it's been with the residents. So from that perspective, I, I'm, I'm in favor. I, I do have some concerns. Um, some, some of the, you know, I'm not going to get too much into the planning, uh, the plan parts of it. I, I, I did find the placement of some of the dining options, they're not necessarily in front of restaurants. So I was, I was kind of questioned why they would put it there instead of closer to the restaurants. But, um, and I did see on the plan, something about a food truck thing too, which was kind of caught me off guard as well. So, but, uh, my, I, I'm getting a little off topic. I, I, my biggest concern is, is with the, the structure of the grant itself. Because as the Alfresco Grant is written, and you, you touched on this a little bit, it, it, there is a maximum of $5,000. And with eight restaurants there, this, this grant request is essentially tripling, uh, what, what is currently allowed under the grant. So if, if we're going to go ahead and, and change, uh, the requirements for the grant itself and change, um, you know, all of that, uh, then that I'd be comfortable, but I, I want to make sure that we change the requirements in advance, uh, change the expectations in advance. And then my request would be to properly advertise that as well. So all of our business, uh, businesses within the city would have an equal opportunity to, uh, have access to those funds. So that we can, you know, make sure everyone's, uh, we're doing everything we can for everybody. But, uh, I wouldn't want this to look like we kind of made a sweetheart deal with one, one builder and, um, you know, perhaps neglected others. So, um, love the idea, love what we're doing. I, you know, without seeing the final terms, I, I have no idea, I had no, uh, opposition of upping the amounts that we're, we're, we're granting, but I just would like to see it more formalized and properly advertised and, and made the commute, all of our business owners aware of it before we awarded anything to anybody.
Yeah, I, I just want to piggyback on, uh, some of Tom's thoughts. I guess my, um, biggest questions with this are process related. This is 113,000 out of a budget, if I read and in the, uh, memo correctly, of about 125,000 left. So this would deplete all but $12,000. And we are changing the criteria from $5,000 to apparently open-ended um, with a specific project in mind. And I, I want to make sure that this is the best use of that, that fund, the best location. And so I, I, I think I agree that if we're going to be changing the criteria, we need to perhaps take a step back and look um, beyond. I think that there are definitely lots of areas in the city that I think could use improvements. Um, and I'm not opposed to, you know, helping our commercial businesses, but I just want to make sure we're following a process that kind of examines more holistically, um, what we want to do. And then, um, the, the previous, um, limit was a one-to-one match. So is with the 113 grant or, or under the new criteria, would businesses still be expected for a one-to-one match? Or what would the new match criteria?
Yeah, I think we'd probably want to see something above one-to-one if it's, if we're going to up the, the number. Um, you know, the, so, so we can talk about that, but, um, what was contemplated at the Shops of Dunwoody is significantly above a one-to-one match. Um, but yes, we could put that in the requirement. So I think it would be, you know, not sure what the number is, but certainly above one-to-one.
Thank you.
No specific questions, just in general, I'd rather use it than not. So I'm going to be in favor of, you know, tweaking our criteria to get it used.
Stacy?
Um, Michael, I know Regency, you know, across the street in Shemlee Dunwoody has plans and you showed me some pretty pictures in your office. Um, like, how do we say, I guess, I was kind of struggling with, how do we say yes to Shops of Dunwoody, but we're not giving Regency any, anything for what they're doing along by cap, what they were planning to do along Cafe Far? Or are we? Help me out with that.
Absolutely. So the, the Development Authority, um, provided them with a $160,000 grant to do, to do that work. You know, it started in just the courtyard, but then grew beyond that, uh, went beyond just, uh, what, what David Avis was doing. So they are receiving that from the Development Authority.
Okay. Okay. So that's what I didn't know. I didn't know that the Development Authority money was, was going towards more than just the courtyard.
Yep. Yeah, there's going for all of those, um, little pocket areas that, that they're still planning to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Joe, go ahead.
But again, like with Catherine, I'd rather use it than watch it sit there.
Right. Thanks. Um, you, you've got my email and the council got copied on it. So thanks. I, I'm excited about doing anything to make it more livable and walkable and linger longer. Absolutely. So, and you know me, if you give me a foot in the door, I'll just ask for a little bit tweet, you know, hey, again, you saw the questions. I think, um, the idea of really activating that front space with that green, how can people easily walk into the center from Shemlee Dunwoody? Um, maybe even using the empty parking lot at Burger King every so often for some kind of community event, you know, just whatever, just kind of asking out of the block some things. So that's great. Um, and then the idea of holistically, do they want to talk to the Development Authority? Do you want to try to see if the Development Authority wants to put some skin in the game as well? It's just above and beyond, right? It's just additional funding. If the Development Authority is giving some dollars to Regency, that would be up to them to talk to Development Authority and ask them to, to potentially contribute as well, right? Um, so I guess these, but anyway, you've got my email and I appreciate, um, having some more conversation next time. Thanks.
John, anything?
Thank you, Michael, for the presentation. There've been lots of great questions by other council members and, uh, they've asked for some, uh, feedback and I'm looking forward to reading all that. So thank you very much. Nothing from me, otherwise.
Okay, so the history of this grant, just for Catherine and everybody's refreshing. Robert, um, is that this was meant to help businesses weather the first winter. Well, who knew it was going to be the first winter of COVID? We kind of probably thought it was going to be the only winter of COVID, right? And it was my idea. I think, Michael, we saw it on all kinds of trainings. Thought it was the best idea ever and it kind of fell flat, right? We had a handful of, and it wasn't just for restaurants, right? I think the bike, the cycle bar got, uh, money for outside heaters and tents and stuff. So it was never designed, it was clearly not designed for just restaurants. It was for any business that needed to do it to stay open. I'm all in favor of skin in the game to revitalize our commercial areas. To everyone's point though, I think we have to be, so I believe, I think, and Jay left the room, I think this is an applicable use in ARP to help small businesses. The challenge is going to be The challenge is going to be helping big businesses, right? Cause this is, and so. Okay. I think somebody might not be on mute. I think, um, that we ought to step maybe a tiny bit back. Because like I told you, I already got a call today, this morning early from a property owner. And I think we need to figure out what our criteria are, how we're going to manage it. And we need to understand the rules of the ARP funds. Um, I'm all for this. I think that the cities that everyone, everyone always tells us to be like so-and-so, or we want you to. They, all those cities invest in their, or have invested in their communities. And so it's not the idea, I just think we had to be the process. I think the process questions are really important. And in, in addition, I think the question about skin in the game is really important because. I kind of thought we were paying for it all for, I'd kind of forgotten about the skin in the game part, even though, and so. Given that maybe the, you know, the initial reason we did this fund was to help businesses weather that winter. You know, maybe we need to step back a tiny bit and try to figure out what our goal statement is, what our action, you know, what our objectives are. And figure out how to come up with a plan that presents. That's, you know, last time it was just kind of send us your $5,000 in receipts and we reimburse you because we believe that you need the heaters, the blankets, the tent, whatever. And we need to figure all that out, I think, because you may think, I mean, they may think that painting a building X color. Is going to really help and are we going to say yes or no to that? Or are we just taking their word? You know, when, with across the street at Regency, even though it was not, I didn't think it was necessary, you know, they brought me in to see pictures of all the furniture. That they were going to use and, and I don't want that person to be me ever again, by the way. But, but my point is, is that what is our participation in the process? Is we give bigger sums of money, you know, and then how do we make sure we are applying it equitably throughout the city? So anyway, things to think about. Thank you, Michael.
Yep. Thank you. See you in a couple of weeks.
Yep. Anybody have anything else? Okay. We're back to public comments, I believe. So I think we did that. If you're on Zoom and you would like to make a comment, you may raise your hand. Brittany, do we have any cards here? Ginger, if you want to check on Zoom for me, please.
Please raise your hand if you'd like to speak in public comment. I see no hands raised at this time.
All right. Thank you. Council comments? Oh, city manager comments? I don't think I missed that. Eric?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, we do need an executive session tonight. For legal and real estate, and then also, um, we'll be doing that via, via Zoom. Of course, it is a closed meeting, so.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody, uh, council comments? John?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The last, uh, city council meeting, I asked that the city review the rules and procedures for city council meetings. And that was brought, uh, forward to the council members. And I just want to make sure that if that, uh, document needs to be tweaked, that we do so in the near future. Maybe we should, uh, review it and tweak it if it.
It does, and I've started working on it today, but if anybody has feedback, send it my way, please, and I'll get it to y'all. Hopefully I'll have it on the agenda before the next meeting.
Great. Thank you, man.
Um, I had the pleasure, uh, to, uh, get out of my home, uh, this last weekend on Friday and Saturday. And some other of my, of our peers were there for four days downtown in Atlanta at the Georgia Municipal Association, uh, one of the meetings. And, um, I, I took a day off for my day job, took vacation day. I was there on Friday in class. And then Saturday, again, it was great to see it, but I just want to set back to, I'm sitting around room with other people from other cities. And we think about how we are trying to do things, what's going on in the day-to-day, and then you listen to the other folks and man. Council members don't talk to each other. I got a brand new city manager that nobody talks to. They don't have email address. They don't have this, that, and. Boy, we are working about, I, I'm not, I'm not discounting as an insider, whatever outsider, but. There are a lot of cities that are struggling just doing basic blocking and tackling operations out there. And I really, really, really do appreciate everything we have here. The things I ask and the things that we say here, you know, I think a, a lot of cities in Georgia aren't even having these kind of conversations. They're just, they want to keep the lights running. And I, I don't mean that in discounting them, but anyway, um, I just want to frame it that, yeah, I just. Have to think about it when I hear folks saying like, boy, I'm, I'm glad that we are not having to worry about what's going on over there. And I thank again, uh, Chief Rogan and, 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 uh, and Eric Lynn and all the staff for, for doing that and, and the peers up here as well. So thanks.
Okay. Catherine?
Uh, yeah, I just want to take a, a brief moment. I'm sure at this point, most of the communities heard of the passing of Dick Williams. And I just wanted to take a moment to, to acknowledge that tonight. Dick Williams was the, the editor, the owner of the Dunwoody Crier for several years, obviously had a long. And illustrious career in journalism, well beyond that, not just in Atlanta, but nationally. But I'm going to focus on here in Dunwoody and, and what he did for us. Everyone knows the crier, um, and you know, there's been a lot of tributes out to him over the last couple of days. I've been reading them and. One of them I thought was, was quite appropriate. He was referred to as one of the founding fathers of Dunwoody. And I believe that's true because, you know, his coverage of the, of the Dunwoody move, cityhood movement was, was a vital part in us becoming a city. And, um, and beyond that, uh, his just community contributions. Sponsoring the parade and light up Dunwoody and everything else he did through the crier. So, um, you know, big part of this community, uh, and will definitely be missed. Uh, for, for those who don't know, I briefly wrote for the crier as a sports, I was the first sports reporter for the Dunwoody Crier back in 2001. Uh, it was something, uh, just, uh, I've always been a sports fan, love sports, and I thought it would be a fun thing to do to cover the high school sports. So, and I used to love popping into the crier's office and, uh, just talking sports with Dick. He loved his Georgetown Hoyas. You know, I love my, uh, Penn State Nittany Lions. So we'd sit down and talk either basketball or football, depending on the season. So, uh, he'll be missed. He was, uh, his contributions to the city were, were enormous and, uh, prayers to his family.
Um, so in fact, my son was the first one in where in the world is the crier, and I hope his COVID. Hopefully winds down that they can start the where in the world is a crier again, because I know that was always fun to watch and see where your friends and neighbors were. So we are in year two of the pandemic and I'm in year two of council, and I just wanted. I, I, I got a present for Lynn because I think you've been this fabulous mayor. None of us knew what we were getting into. When Joe and I got sworn in and you didn't know what you were signing up for for mayor. And you've just been this person who finds vaccines for people and finds toilet paper for people, and it's just everywhere and anywhere. And the phrase that you have taught me and that I've carried over into my personal and other professional life is space and grace. Like everybody is reacting to this differently and we've all had to do different things. And space and grace has kind of become a mantra of yours, I know, and, and kind of become a mantra of mine. So, um, I had a, a friend who's an artist. Make this for you. So. Greg Schlem lives here in Dunwoody, um, and he made this. It's Mayor Deutsch. Space and Grace.
That is awesome. That is awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Stacy. That's awesome. Thank you.
So, and I will just say he, he would not actually let me pay him for it, but he will take payment and license plates. So if you have any old license plates, I will take them and I will get them to Greg.
That's fantastic. Thank you. I'll hang it and carry it with me everywhere. So I remember my own mantra. Okay, so that we need a motion for executive session for purposes of real estate and legal.
So moved.
Second, moved by John, second by Stacy. Any discussion? Hearing none, uh, called the question, all in favor of exiting to executive session for legal and real estate, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll be back.
Did you see Jay's text about room assignments?
Yes.
We're going to dog with you. Might bring it with you because we might have to check resume or something.
Yeah. Don't, don't, if you put two devices on, don't put the sound on both.
I figured we had to.
No, a friend. Do you know him?
Yes.
Okay. I'm like, I'm giving up my, um.
I'm like I'm giving up my um.
Hello Sharon.
We're live on Facebook.
I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you.